...Magic Gavel. Carol, can you take a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Grippo?
Here.
Ms. Howland?
Here.
Ms. Hamm?
Here.
Ms. Harrigan?
Here.
Mr. Martelli? Mr. Pierogini?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Chairman Nevekorn?
Thank you. Could we please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I would like to do a few lines of the United States of America, a sincere republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Welcome everyone this evening. Thank you for coming out. This is actually one of our fun times when we do these showcases. It's kind of a treat for us to see all the great work you folks do and see how our kids are benefiting. So, nothing from us, so we're going to hear from you. And so, Marlene, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. So, tonight, as Tony said, is a very special meeting, which is the showcase for Dodd Middle School. And we're very happy to have some special guests with us tonight. So, I will turn it over to Ms. Marie Broadway, who is the Secondary Supervisor of Special Education. And she and her team have prepared a nice night for us, where they will share about the continuum of special education services here at Dodd Middle School. Thank you, Marie.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, I'm going to continue where Robin left off with 6th grade and show you exactly what happens here at Dodd Middle School for 7th and 8th grade Special Ed. Unfortunately, not every one of my staff could be here due to family obligations and unfortunately, some illnesses and surgeries and things. But I have Lisa Hartman, who is one of our Life Skills teachers. Elena Palermo next to her, another Life Skills teacher. Andrea Cofrancesco, who is our Division Leader, and also an 8th grade Special Education teacher. And Jenna Brady, who is our Bridges Therapeutic Program teacher.
All right, welcome.
Students learn best when they feel welcome, comfortable, and safe. When I first found out I had to do this showcase, I knew that I wanted to highlight our classrooms. They are welcoming. They are warm. They are safe. I can't wait to show you that. All roads lead to Dodd. Every elementary school filters into Dodd Middle School. We spend a great deal of time helping to transition our students from 6th grade to 7th grade. It's a huge leap for them. It really is. So, Robin and I started, I don't know, Robin, what, November? We started kind of mapping out our projections of who might be going to which programs and how many and, you know, getting an idea of them. So, we continue that. Every month, we update each other. And then Andrea Cofrancesco goes to each elementary school and meets with the Special Education teachers there to get an idea of who's coming. Then, a Dodd representative attends every PPT, every 6th to 7th grade transition PPT, so that we have input and really get to know the parents, the families, and learn more and more about the IEPs, and so we can plan. Class visits in the spring. We have an orientation in the summer. And many of the students are so nervous that we do end up planning special trips in the summer. I'll meet them here. Mr. Pierocino, Mr. Woods will have them in more frequently throughout the summer, so they can have, you know, more familiarity with the building. So, our Special Ed population here at Dodd, we're at 12%. The state of Connecticut, the entire state, this isn't just middle school, is at 15% right now. We kind of look to be under that number. That's our benchmark. We don't want to go higher. You know, it's just something that we keep an eye on, and that's where we're at.
A question?
Sure.
How would you have any control over the Special Ed number being higher or lower than 15? Wouldn't that depend on the kids that live here?
Well, it absolutely does. And you'll see, we'll break it down a little bit, and you'll see where we're higher in some of the disabilities than the state average. It's just something, we don't want to over-identify. And the state does kind of keep an eye on this. And they'll ask, "How come?" Yeah.
Okay.
Like, "How come you're over-identifying students?" So...
Okay.
You know, and it is an average.
Sure, sure, sure.
And here's some of the classifications. So, the OHI in this slide is broken apart, Other Health Impaired. So, it's broken apart by students with Attention Deficit Disorder and Attention Deficit with Hyperactivity Disorder at 23.1% here at Dodd. LD is Learning Disabilities. It's hard to say, 34%. ED is Emotional Disturbance. Autism, 9.9%. The Other Health Impaired, that's students who don't have ADD or ADHD but may have some sort of a medical illness that would qualify them. ID, Intellectual Disabilities, at 6.8%. Multiple Disabilities, so they have, they can have ID, autism, and ADHD all rolled into one, and Speech and Language Impairment. That's our population here. And here's a slide just showing the difference between Dodd's disabilities in the state of Connecticut. Dodd is blue, state is orange. We are higher. The OHI, Other Health Impaired in this slide, has both the medical OHI as well as the ADHD combined, so that may factor in. You could see our emotional disturbances higher. Just highlighting again the need for more mental health services. And I think Robin showed a very similar slide to this, but we want to start in our least restrictive environment, in the regular ed classroom as much as possible, and build supports as we go. And you'll see, we're going to go on a field trip a little bit, so you could see and hear more about those environments. We're really lucky at the middle school to have teaming. So, each grade level has three teams, and we have a Special Ed teacher attached to each team. So, there's support for all students, not just the Special Ed students. We have co-taught, co-taught resource on each. And then Life Skills and Bridges are attached to one team on each grade level as well. Now, we're going to go on a field trip. Yes?
Quick question before you. When you were showing the LD and OHI stats, is that, those spikes, is that in common last few years in terms of characteristics?
Mm-hmm.
It hasn't really kind of trended?
It's trending up in those areas throughout the whole state, actually.
Okay. So, we're not necessarily something special to our...
No. It's not special to...
Of that group of the population.
It absolutely is spiking.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
Do you know what that's attributed to? Have they been...
No, not yet. Not yet. I wish we could find out what it's attributed to, because then we could help prevent a lot of it. We're just seeing spikes in students who are overcome with anxiety and depression and having a hard time dealing with it. And then, if it impacts their educational performance, then, you know, they end up needing special education services.
And then, how long would they be in the service? I mean, obviously, the goal is to get them out.
Right. So, as short-term as possible. We don't plan for forever. It's not a destination. We don't want it ever to be, "That's it." You know, if we can even lessen the IEP to a 504 plan with just accommodations, that's another goal.
Is the only reason to identify, say, for even autism spectrum, would that be solely for, to develop an IEP? Or would you want to identify even if...
So, that's really good, because...
You weren't going to have an IEP.
Right, no. So, if you suspect there is a disability and it has an educational impact, we would go through the evaluation process. But at the end, if we, you know, discover through the evaluation that it's, they're okay without specialized instruction, they don't necessarily need an IEP or an individualized educational plan. Some can go on to have 504 plans or just be in the regular education with supports.
I could ask them off the top.
Sure.
So, are you, if you evaluate and deem a student as not qualified for an IEP or 504?
Yes.
Do parents often go to outside evaluators? Have you started to see that happen?
Sometimes, but not often. We really work very hard at comprehensive evaluations, so it's hard, it would be hard pressed for them to have a reason to do so.
And they're part of the process, too. They're obviously know what's going on, the education's happening.
Absolutely.
They have time to ask the questions, actually going through this and also get educated on.
Absolutely. And our school psychologists are part of the team, and they're well-versed in how to answer the questions that parents may have, you know, with the specific concerns. It's a good question.
Are we ready for the tour?
I think we're ready.
Okay.
We're going to go to co-taught first. Great it is. So, this is going to highlight the first step in our continuum, which is co-teaching.
Okay. So, we always like to, you know, our goal is to have the students be in the least restrictive environment, restrictive environment, so that they're getting the least amount of services that they need in order to be successful with a curriculum. So, for the co-teaching classes, we have co-taught classes in Language Arts and Math in both 7th and 8th grade. And what that means is, myself as a special educator, works with a general educator in those two classes, with the idea being to create a more inclusive environment. So, again, the idea is that when you're in the classroom, you don't know who is the Special Ed teacher and who is the general ed teacher. And that is what we strive to do here, knowing that the general ed teacher is the content specialist. So, I was in 7th grade for many, many years, and I moved up to 8th grade a few years ago. So, the first couple of years in math, I hadn't taught the 8th grade curriculum. So, I kind of was, like, stood kind of to the side in the beginning, let the teacher kind of do her thing, and then, as I got to know the curriculum better, I kind of jumped in more. Currently, we have about 10 Special Ed students in the co-taught classroom, and we do a variety of different types of teaching. So, we will take turns doing the instruction, and we do a lot of small group work. We do a lot of station work, where we divide the kids up into three groups. Maybe one group will be working independently. Those might be the kids who, you know, really understand the task at hand or are better at self-starting. And then, Ms. Portal, she's my co-teacher, and myself might divide up the other two groups where kids need more instruction, and we're working with them. Sometimes, we will split kids up, and some kids will come in here, and some kids will stay in there. But we're never doing it by dividing up Special Ed versus regular ed. We're always integrating the kids. And what's kind of nice, and what I like about this room, is that it's in with the team. So, the idea is for all of the kids to feel comfortable coming in here, and we have a lot of general ed kids that also spend time in here. And those might be kids that are just struggling emotionally, or just maybe want some extra attention, or when kids are absent and they come back and they miss some instruction, they might come in and, you know, ask. My instructional assistant, who is wonderful, she keeps a science notebook, so the kids will come in here and say, "Can I see the exemplar science notebook? I need to catch up with notes." So, we try to make it very welcoming. We call the kids that just kind of end up, in the beginning of the year, it's kind of Special Ed kids, and then toward the middle of the year, we start getting all the general ed kids coming in. And we call the general ed kids our stray cats, because they just kind of hang out. But it works out really well, because the kids really don't know what I do. And they'll say, "Well, what, you know, what are you? Are you a tutor? Are you a teacher? What are you?" And that's kind of what we like. We like them not to know that it's, you know, Special Ed. So, in terms of the co-teaching, we do share this responsibility. The reality is, there's not as much time as we would like to be able to plan with the general ed teacher. So, the general ed teacher does end up doing more of the planning than I do. When it comes to assessments, the Special Ed kids have IEPs and they have accommodations. So, we work together to plan the accommodations for the kids and look at each individual student. And we might have three tiers of tests. We might have four tiers of tests. We might do some kids orally. We might have some kids, like, you know, show some models. Some kids might take the test in here. Some kids might take the test in the general ed classroom and then come in here, and I go over it with them orally. So, we really try and meet students' needs. I had a student today who's been having a really tough time the last few months, and he had a lot of behavioral challenges last year. And he went into social studies, and he took a test, or he has to come in here and take the test. So, he took it. He wanted to know how he did, and Jill, my instructional assistant, looked at it, and she's looking at me across the room going, "You failed." So, I said, you know, "Let's try it orally. Let's go over it and see if he changes any of his answers and see if talking it out helps him." He went through it again, and we did it orally, and he then had, I think, like, an 85%. So, it's really, our goal is that the kids are learning. It doesn't matter to us how they're showing that knowledge. For whatever reason, and I think for this kid, it was lack of confidence, he wasn't able just to read it himself and do the questions. I think he rushed. I think, you know, he kind of gave up. But then, when we started going over it with him orally, and we said, you know, "Okay, good job," and we're trying to keep, you know, we don't prompt him, we just, you know, ask the questions. But with that encouragement, I think he felt a lot more comfortable. And you could just see that as he went on and on and got closer to the end of it, he was just feeling so much better about himself. So, that's really what the goal is. I don't know if they have another slide or not. Oh, okay. Yep, I block. So, what I block is, and almost every special education student at Dodd has an I block, and it stands for, what does it stand for?
Intervention.
Intervention block? It stands for intervention block. And that's when, we have small groups of the kids that come into my room one period a day usually. Some kids are in here alternate days. The homework's up on the board. The kids have to write the homework in their agendas. And then, I will go through all the classes for the day. I start with what's the hardest assignment, meet with kids individually. If they're working on an essay, that's what I'll give them, like, individual feedback. And if they're stuck on something in math, I'll call a couple of kids up and do math with them. So, that, it's very flexible, and it really depends on what's going on on team. You know, and that's really where the kids get that heavy intervention, the I for intervention. So, that is, I find that to be one of the most valuable times of the day. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
I'm embarrassing, but if I miss that, I apologize. What is your names?
Andrea Cofrancesco.
I'm sorry.
No, and I didn't, I didn't say that in the beginning.
Sorry. And distract me, so he said it. It was his fault.
Oh, that's fine. It's always his fault.
How, the kids aren't in co-taught in this class, is there? They spend the majority of their day here?
No. No. My kids only come in here one period a day. So, their schedule would look like a co-taught Language Arts and/or Math. And then, they're all general ed for Science and Social Studies in their Unified Arts class. They come in here every other day or every day. I also have two or three kids that come in here twice on some days, because those are kids who are either low or functioning, but we want to keep them out in the mainstream, or they're struggling socially and emotionally.
And I'd imagine, I see kids that eventually are going through this, coming in less often because they are below the skills, assuming if it's a resource class or ed tier class or not so much co-taught.
Well, co-taught is our least restrictive, so after co-taught, we want them to move out into the mainstream with no support. And that does happen. Definitely happens. We do, you know, our goal is to exit kids. Sometimes, in 8th grade, it's not the best time to exit a kid, because they have that huge transition into the high school. So, at this time of year, we're kind of saying, "Hmm, let's keep them in," and then have a PPT in, you know, April, not April, like, October, let them transition, and then maybe do an exit.
A lot of the Special Ed teachers do bring in their own furniture, you know?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
There was a Special Ed teacher brought in all this.
Not all of it.
Marie Willeb, I think it counted. Marie Willeb, that chair herself.
Yeah. That chair right there.
Very talented.
So, Lori Kornacki is out today. I don't even know that we have to pull her up. I think we could speak to it, but she was supposed to be here, but she is one of our resource room teachers, so that's our next step in the continuum. So, if a student is well below grade level and is unable to access the general ed curriculum in Language Arts, meaning the reading, the writing, or in math, they do come in here. So, they are pulled up. Their instruction and curriculum is modified. However, it is still addressing a lot of the state standards for the grade level. It's just given in a simpler way, so that they can understand it and access the same skills that everybody else does. So, the students in here will have resource math, resource Language Arts. They do go out for their science class in the general ed curriculum. They do go out for science as well. All of their Unified Arts classes are there, and they also have their I block, one or two, in here as well. So, it's a little more supported. There is more removal from the least restrictive environment of their general ed classroom, but it's because they really need it. Our goal for them is to exit to co-taught and eventually exit out of Special Education. Did I get everything you think? Any questions? This is our Bridges Therapeutic Self-Contain classroom, and it's designed for students who are struggling socially and emotionally. And Jenna Brady is the classroom teacher, and she'll tell you more about them. But attached with Jenna Brady, we also have a social worker, who I would say has about 85% of her time in here, which is great. And we have a BCBA, a Behavior Analyst, that's assigned to this classroom, too, not just this room, but she spends a great deal of time in here helping. And we have Sadie, the therapy dog, too, that's been, they were supposed to be here too, but Sadie couldn't make it tonight, so I'm going to let Jenna take it away.
Sadie's the therapy dog?
Yes, we have a higher photo.
Does a teacher own the dog?
Our social worker.
Social worker, okay.
Yes.
It's not the school that's, okay.
I wish you could have been here.
I know. I don't even have a photo, sorry.
So, this program is designed for the student who's performing at or above academic ability. But the reason why they're within the Special Education system is due to their emotional challenges that get in the way of them from attending school, or going to a class, or being in large crowds and things like that. So, they have appropriate self-help skills. They have already had an IEP established. They've been through the LRE, the Least Restrictive Environment Continuum. So, we've tried co-taught. We've tried the resource. Actually, they're too advanced for resource, so you kind of get into that struggle of, "What do we do? They're not willing to go to class. Where do we put them? Maybe this is an option." There's, they've also been evaluated by, or been working with, the Behavior Analyst, who's been put in place a functional behavioral assessment, which has evaluated the function of their behavior and maybe why they're engaging in such behaviors that they're having throughout the day. The focus for us is to increase positive relationships. So, the first thing, you know, I do with a student is just get to know them, make sure they feel comfortable with me. If they're not feeling comfortable in this environment, typically, we find they're not really going to be willing to work and get down to the task at hand. You know, we help them build relationships with peers. Sometimes, that's one of the things they struggle with, too. We teach them to manage daily life stressors, things like, you know, a schedule change, or, you know, I got up too late, or, you know, I didn't eat breakfast. Those things could really set our kids off, so how do we help them manage those throughout the day? We're very flexible in here. We're firm and structured, but we're flexible in the sense that if they need a second I block, because, you know, science got too challenging that quarter, we allow for that, things like that. The student learns to manage emotional and academic stressors, and they can help, we help them effectively communicate with us, peers, other teachers. The really nice thing about this program this year is it's really kind of evolved. When I came into the role last year, a lot of my students, you know, really stayed in this room. They didn't leave. They didn't feel comfortable outside these walls. This year, I have some kids who are only with me for one core period, and they're out in the regular mainstream with IA support. So, it really has helped them build up their confidence in order to continue into mainstream classes with their peers. And then, I do work with the social worker a lot. She's amazing.
This is Elena Palermo, and she's one of our Life Skills teachers. It's a self-contained classroom, so higher end of the continuum.
Yep. And feel free to peek on the other side. We have this incredible space, which has just been so wonderful, because we do so many different things in this room. So, we really try to utilize every little bit of it. But welcome. So, again, I'm Elena Palermo. This is Life Skills. We have the most highest-needs kids in this room, anywhere from non-verbal to severely multi-handicapped with lots of physical needs. We met recently with the high school Special Ed teachers, and I found out everyone there has an acronym for their program, so I felt like I needed one, too. So, I came up with Palermo's pals, professions, academics, life skills. It's short, sweet, but I think it really highlights what we do in here. It's also kind of egocentric of me, because it's really not my program. Everything we do is very much built on Deb Taylor, who was my predecessor, who now works at our Quinipiac program, someone I very much admire. So, she really started this all. We also have the best IAs in this room, the best related service people. Lisa Hartman is here sharing the lobe with me this year, so that's just been wonderful. So, professions is the first part of it. And here's just some shots of our kids. But really, the goal is to get these kids out and working in the world one day. And it seems like it's really early to be talking about that, but it's not. We want them to have such a strong foundation to be members of our community. We're out in the community every week on Tuesday. You might see us out and about. We have a field trip every week. We see lots of jobs and actions, anything from a farmer to someone working at the grocery store. So, we have a lot of discussions based around those things. Visual resumes is something we started this year at Marie's suggestion. So, every child has a working document. This has been awesome for me as a teacher, because it's been a way to kind of compile everyone's skills and really look at, "What do our kids know how to do? What do they still need to work on?" So, it's been wonderful. I think it's also been great for the children also. We put them up on the board, and the kids talk about, "What jobs are you liking? Do you want to work outside someday? Do you want to work with people? Do you want to work by yourself?" So, it's been wonderful. It's also going to follow them up to the high school. Tom Manning is doing the same thing. So, I think it's just a great working document that they're going to be able to build on for years to come. We do lessons in the classroom on professions also, and of course, vocational practice all over the place. So, here's some of the things that they work on. You know, some of them are just very vocational-based, little toolkits they do, plant care, tea cart, something, again, Deb Taylor started it, but now we're doing it three days a week, three times a day. So, it's really kind of expanded. Plants, we have probably 50 plants throughout the building that the kids water. Excuse me. We're cleaning in the cafeteria. We're cleaning the library. They stock all the supplies in the cafeteria on a daily basis. These are jobs, the school depends on us. We show up there every day, and we're needed, so it's very nice. Extra points if you know who this gentleman is. But we keep them very, very busy in here. We're out and about constantly. Academics is the next part of it, obviously. It's a very important part. The level of academics varies greatly, you know, based on the population that we have in here every year. I can say we try to make it as functional as possible. Something the kids worked on this week was taking all the clothes from the lost and found. We washed everything, or folding to donate to Goodwill. We turned it into a math lesson. We categorized everything. How many hoodies did we find? How many hats? Which category had the most items? Which category had the least items? So, just making everything rolled into one. The office thinks of jobs for us. They're great. It might be something simple, like putting the menus in the mailboxes, or collecting DC envelopes. The cafeteria, again, Eileen has been wonderful. She incorporates us wherever she can. They stock items, like I said, cleaning, folding towels. And the community also, that's something that's been a little bit new. We've been out to Eye Insurance to collect cans and bottles, and again, getting involved with Goodwill, so that's been nice. There's my guys. The Life Skills, I think, is my favorite part, cooking, crafts-type stuff. Cooking crafts type stuff. Lisa's really great with the craft stuff too. You know, but again, it's all about measurement, following directions while also making things fun and functional. There's my guys. This is Sadie.
There's Sadie.
So this is Sadie, our therapy dog. She's got treats on top of the fridge in here so she knows to come find us. Some of the recipes that we've made, we cook once or twice a week. The kids shop for all the groceries for those recipes. We follow the National Food Holiday List. So that's kind of fun. We also incorporate News To You recipes, which is a great program that we read from every week. And then here's a list of some of the field trips that we've been on. And I think I just have to say, from speaking to Lauren Block at Highland, Tom Manning at the high school, we have Jen Volpe, who's our BCBA. We have Carrie Peck, who's our OT person, who's between here and the high school. I think we're getting the kids really prepared to have a nice smooth transition between the buildings. And I can't say enough about the support we get from the community for this program, our DOD community. People host our plants in their rooms. They buy our coffee. I don't know if it's even any good, but they do it. They have conversations with the kids when the kids stop by. It's awesome to see. And just the larger Cheshire community, I've never had a business or an establishment where I've called ahead of time and said, just giving you a heads up, there's 24 of us coming in. These are the level of needs. No one's ever said, oh, I don't know. I'm not sure. Please don't come. Let's rethink this. Everybody's welcomed us with open arms. And that's been just, you know, tremendous. So thank you to everybody for all the support.
That's great.
Any questions?
And Lisa Hartman has the other half of our life skills population.
So I work with Elena part of the day for independent living skills and vocational skills. But I also have some of my students that are doing academics, the reading and writing and comprehension and math, separate from hers. And also, and she, some of her students are working at a little bit of a different level. So for language arts, we want to make, language arts and math, we want to make it accessible to all the students, whether they're verbal or non-verbal. And I have some non-verbal as well. And so we use the smartboard. We use iPads and their communication devices. So they, and also signs. And we have a wonderful program called News To You, which is able to show visuals above all the words that the students are reading. And that's very helpful as well. We read current news articles, what's going on state, national, sports and entertainment. The students work on the calendar and weather. And we also, of course, encompass encoding, comprehension, written expression. For math, we use multisensory approaches. We use things like touch math to help the students with dots on numbers that help them count. We're doing counting, telling time, money, measurement, reading graphs and problem solving. The students also partake in other academics. Our groups right now are not in science or social studies classes out in the mainstream, but last year we did have some students that were in the mainstream classes with IA support and did very well with modified assessments. We do give the students geography lessons weekly and we also do science. And the science, we try to base it on the goals and objectives from the alternative assessment that the students have to take. The students partake about once a week in a science experiment or an arts and crafts lesson that is theme-based and goes along with the readings that we do on a weekly basis. Elena already went into the field trips and some of the field trips that we take. These help the students work on their daily living skills, their vocational skills that they're practicing every day in school and as well as their social skills to help them increase their background knowledge. Some of the after-school activities that our students participate in are Best Buddies, which is put on by Mrs. Peck. And so students, regular peers around the school become buddies with our students and they do lots of different activities on a monthly basis. Unified sports is wonderful and put on by Mr. Repetzky. And he'll do several practices in basketball or soccer or other sports. And then the students get to partake in a tournament with the towns around here. The students also partake in Fitness Center. We have some in the Drama Club and going into the Talent Show. They're auditioning for that. And really, the students really open their arms and really welcome them. And it's wonderful to see, you know, when they're out there on the stage and performing and the audience cheering for them. So they really, it's, the school's so welcoming for the students, so. But our students partake in many different activities with their non-disabled peers. There's also lunch groups that are happening throughout the school with our students to support them with their social skills. So, and that's, that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Of the list of class activities, do they have a favorite?
Do they have a favorite?
Yeah. Or is it kind of well-spread out?
The ones that the students partake in the most would probably be Best Buddies. They love going to Best Buddies and being with their buddies and they get contact numbers with them and get to communicate with them. And they also love the Unified Sports. And again, there's regular peers that get involved with that too and they really make some good friends and really enjoy that. They make some nice bonds. So.
So it goes back to, it goes back to students learn best when they feel welcome, comfortable and safe. And I hope that you saw why I brought you to all the different rooms. I was going to go back to the library and end there, but we can just end here if that's okay. I don't know if you have any questions for any of us?
All right, you brothers have questions?
No.
So we should adjourn if we want to hear a motion to adjourn? That's all. Yeah, absolutely. If there's no questions, I want the public and the staff to have the questions. Yes, this is Massiano.
I was gonna, I brought the board members, their operating budget and their capital budget for tonight. And I really don't want to lug all that home. So if you adjourn here.
We'll adjourn back at the library. I just want to thank all the staff, all you folks tonight. You've already had a long day. I'll see teachers, administrators in the audience that, you know, came for this tour and you folks have a long, thank you for being here, coming to this meeting. I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board and many, many parents of students that go through this program, that you're doing a phenomenal job. And I can't tell you how many times I hear parents that tell me they've moved the Cheshire to take advantage of a program like this. And I never hear any complaints. Always have positive things to say. And, you know, we see the students evolving, learning, you know, getting more confidence in skills and it's just a positive thing. So thank you, everyone, for your hard work. It's definitely paying off and you should know that. Let me say, the board's gonna go back and adjourn the library.
So what you have here is the capital budget book that's been finalized. The operating budget, which we can provide insert services, but everything's labeled. So you take out the guts from the budget book that you have and you put in these new ones. And then I also, they're all whole punched, yes.
What changed?
So what changed is after the board had reduced the budget. And there's, there is a worksheet that's this, one pager. So it's actually pretty easy. So what's incorporated in the budget book is the Board of Ed's budget reductions. And so this is just a summary that you could look at. And then I included in the package the town council's operating budget schedule. And I highlighted the two nights that the Board of Ed is on the agenda. If you have any questions?
I have a question. Are we okay just recycling those pages that we pull out of our report? Or would you prefer that we bring them up?
You could recycle them if you want to. Give them to me next time you see me and we'll recycle them either way. But it's unnecessary.
It's not information that you should be carrying.
No, it's all public information. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you very much, Vincent. Okay, my move.